Do you stand to join in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First, we have announcements. One is a public hearing to consider a local law amending the zoning district to permit parking structures in existing buildings of the business district. That's for Monday, February 3, 2020, at 7 p.m. in Village Hall. Do you want to give a quick review of what that is?
Yeah, this really is quick. Currently, the zoning code prohibits decks or elevated parking structures anywhere in the building. This amendment would permit an elevated parking structure in an already existing building, but not in buildings bordering Main Street and North Park.
North Astor.
North Astor.
I say bordering Main Street and North Astor.
So I'll make a motion to have the public hearing on Monday, February 3, 2020, at 7 p.m. in Village Hall. If I could have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Well done, Lance. Next is a public hearing to consider a local law amending the zoning code to create the North Broadway mixed-use district, also for Monday, February 3, 2020, at 7 p.m. in Village Hall. You've obviously been meeting on this for, I don't even know how many months now.
Yeah.
But this is the new and improved North Broadway mixed-use district law, you know, taking in a lot of the feedback we've gotten from residents and property owners and the board and Mary Ann and professional staff and everybody else. So this is the latest and greatest version that will, again, have a public hearing and, you know, hopefully hear what we didn't get into this version.
Okay, did you want me to go through the changes in the rule table?
Sure.
I think it's probably worth it.
Sure.
The last draft for the public was a one date, September 17, 2019. And the board received a lot of comments on that draft from Maxon, which is the only property owner that responded, made requests to changes from Strawberry Lane Residence and from several other Village Residences. But Brian said the board took all the comments into consideration and agreed on a number of changes that are included in this current draft. And I'll go through them. I need my glasses for this. Okay, the first, and I'm going through them in the order in which they're the document. Some are important, some aren't so important, you know, but they're just the order when they're documented. The first one is in the permitted uses that on attached one family, a three or four, more family dwellings, their use is still in there, but there used to be a limitation on the length of the building and the number of units per building. And that was just because that was taken from the multifamily district. But given that we want to reduce, minimize coverage on these laws, that didn't make sense that we might want a bigger building than one itself. So we eliminated the limitation on the length of the building and the number of units per building. On boutique hotels, the one change made to them was that the access and egress could be from East Sunnyside Lane. There is a limitation in the previous draft that it had to be directly from Broadway. We added in or East Sunnyside Lane. And then the same thing for better practice establishments, the change we're making then too. On FAR, floor area ratio, first of all, we included some definitions for it. They weren't included before. And the FAR is still .30, which is what it was, except we added a provision that, and it was .30, but there was also a bonus could be given for preserving a building of local historic significance or any, we added for any local landmark. But it couldn't go higher than .40. But another provision was added that the board, and I agree that the Board of Trustees in its sole discretion may permit an additional FAR of up to .10 if it determines that the proposed development or elements of the development would further an important public benefit, such as the provision of building housing beyond the Village Code requirements or the provision of a sidewalk along Broadway, except that in no event may the FAR exceed .45. Okay, provisions were added about exterior lighting. There was something in there before, but these are more specific and reflect the lighting restrictions that the board will be announcing tonight. Essentially, that the exterior lighting should be limited to the minimum necessary for safety and convenience, and all lighting has to be dark sky compliant. And there's some limitations on, some more specific limitations which I don't have to go into. Then the provision about preserving stone walls was strengthened. So now that it reads stone walls should not be, these are the law on Broadway, the stone walls are the law on Broadway, should not be removed or modified, except as is absolutely necessary for the proposed use. And on the list of considerations for the planning board in deciding whether a special permission issue, this was added, that it has to be in harmony with the character and appearance of neighboring properties in the village as a whole. The regular site plan standards say with the character of the district, but the neighboring properties are just as important as the district itself. So that's why neighboring properties in the village as a whole. Couple of tweaks on the traffic measurement, but they're really very technical. And then it was a provision that if, that no special permit may be issued for a use using Strawberry Lane for access or egress unless the applicant makes whatever improvements are necessary to ensure and maintain safe passage over Strawberry Lane. And this language was added, from Broadway to the point on Strawberry Lane where the use has access or egress. So if somebody is just coming in, you know, 100 feet up from Broadway, that's the only property you have to prepare to walk to. Provision was added to permit, actually to the taxation law that would allow, because right now, the thing, the taxation section says that you have the authority to collect taxes on hotels. And it reversed the two sections that permit hotels. So this section was added because they're permitted here. And then a provision added that the zoning map is amended.
Okay, I'll make a motion to have the public hearing on Monday, February 3, at 7 p.m. in Village Hall. If I can have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
And now, what I think is the first for me on announcements. Barry, could you give us the details of the congressional forum on Sunday?
Yes. It starts at 4 o'clock. Basically, what will happen is each of the candidates will be allowed two minutes to give what I call the elevator speech. Why am I doing this? Why am I running?
All right, so that's an hour and a half.
No, it should be within half an hour. We get that done. Then I ask each of them a question based on what they had said. Then we have a five-minute break and we collect questions from the audience. And we'll curate those questions and get rid of the duplicates and I'll pose those questions to them. And that's basically it.
Okay, and it's, what time is it?
4 o'clock.
4 o'clock at Mercy?
Mercy, the Rotunda.
Okay, just wanted to get that out there. You're seeing, you reminded me. Anyone on the board have any announcements? Otherwise, we'll move on to correspondence. First one is from Deborah Flood. Dear Constance, I think she sent it to all of us, but we have Connie's version here. I hope you're doing well. I'm writing to express my long-held view that Matheson Park would be open to the public. I've been living in Irvington since 1996 and have always felt uneasy and fast about the residence-only rule. I grew up in New York City where parks are, of course, public and wonderful places for people to connect with each other and enjoy the outdoors. Matheson is such a lovely location, so it is my hope that we can counter Irvington's unfortunate reputation as a snooty village by opening and revamping our parks. So it's a welcome place for all. Thanks for hearing me out. Best, Deborah Flood. Next up is Chet Kerr's letter. It is a very well-written letter, but it's a bit long, so I'm going to take my liberties to summarize it. It's restrictions on use of Matheson Park. Dear Board of Trustees, I am writing in connection with the Board of Trustees' consideration of possibly removing the residence-only restriction for Matheson Park. For the reasons I outline below, I fully support the idea of lifting the current restrictions on the use of Matheson Park and opening it up to the public. Again, I'm summarizing this. I urge everyone to read it in full. It's available online. First, I agree with Village Attorney Mary Ann Sesschitz's comments on December 11, meeting that there are no deed restrictions that require the Village to restrict Matheson Park only to Village residents. The common law has often recognized that the term "public," when used as an adjective, as it is in this indenture, refers to open to all, open to common use, not limited or restricted to any particular class or community. Second, while the resident-only restriction for Matheson Park is undoubtedly one of longstanding, I believe that circumstances within the Village have evolved since those restrictions were first put into place and can offer a new look at how this park can and should be used. Even before the Mathesons transferred ownership of the park to the Village, they had long allowed it to be used as a swimming beach during the summer. At that time, there were no other nearby parks along the river, and as a result, the Matheson Park could become extremely overcrowded, such that it was, quote, "impossible for families residing in the Village to make use of it," end quote. Moreover, circumstances today have greatly changed. Irvington now has several parks that provide different opportunities for recreation, including Casino Hudson Park, which offers access to Hudson River, and the new Irvington Woods Park, which includes the Howard Nature Center, extensive hiking trails. Both of these parks are open to the public, which has worked well for Irvington. Other nearby Villages have also created new parks on Hudson waterfront, also open to the general public. Moreover, because of the ever-increasing opportunities and demands on people's use of their leisure time, the Village expands its increasing resources to encourage the public to take advantage of the parks and other outdoor recreational activities in the Village. Third, I believe that opening up Matheson Park to the public is consistent with other steps the Board of Trustees has recently taken to emphasize that Irvington is a welcoming community. At the December 11 meeting, the Recreation Advisory and Parks Commission made the recommendation that Matheson Park be open to non-residents, but initially only to those non-residents who live in the school district. While allowing non-residents to send their children to schools to use their parks, even if for a small additional fee, may assist in addressing one longstanding issue of contention, I believe that only taking this half step would be a real missed opportunity. I fully appreciate that change can be difficult, especially with respect to long-held expectations over how our community operates. Like many other long-term residents, our family has benefited from and in many ways are comfortable with the rhythms within the Village that we have grown accustomed to. And yet, the Village has always been evolving and changing as new families move in, neighborhoods evolve, and residents' expectations of what they want in their Village, and the Village's parks continue to change. I believe that these changes are good and bring vitality to our community. Therefore, I encourage the Board to embrace change and remove the residence-only restrictions of Matheson Park. Thank you for the consideration in this letter. Respectfully submitted, Charles Kerr. Thank you, Chet, for that. Again, I recommend everyone reads the entire letter. And last up is Linda Kruger. Dear Mayor, Trustees, Administrator, I've decided to receive the email below that Connie had from Connie last week claiming that apparent progress in the public EV charger project with the Village seems the ball is now in our court. Trust the Village respond to Connie with all due speed, and so that public EV chargers can soon become a reality in Irvington. We're now the only river town without them. Due to work travel, I won't be able to attend the next two board meetings, but I'd be grateful if someone could let me know how this progresses.
I'll reach out, hurry up.
Next up is public comments.
Would that be me?
Yeah.
Okay, I do.
Excellent.
Hi.
Hello.
I guess I don't need that since I work with children. I'm pretty loud. You won't want to copy, but I would like to speak from my part if you don't mind. Sorry, I'm going to leave you out. And I'm leaving you out. If you'd like one, I do need one. Thank you, sorry. Okay, I'm standing here as a lifetime resident, and I'd like to defend my son's integrity, and I'd like to defend what I believe is the integrity of this Village. So, good evening, Honorable Mayor and distinguished members of the board. My name is Lynn Marazaj-Lutomsky, and I am a lifetime resident of this community. I graduated from Irvington High School in 1974 and celebrated my 45th reunion with 85 classmates at the Orsley Country Club, whose main reason for coming back was the sense of community, great memories, and the love of growing up here. I'm not only who live here, I work here too. I am the director of the Irvington Children's Center for over 20 years, a community-based service that provides before and after-school care for children ages 5 to 13 from working families of the school district and community. It's a well-respected business, and I've always had a wonderful working relationship with the police department, thanks to Chief Seron. In 1996, when my last family member died, my husband said, "You don't want to, why don't we move? Why do you live here? You have such bad memories." I replied, "Are you kidding? This place is family. This community is my home. I'll never move." So we chose to buy a house and raise our son here. Our son graduated from Irvington High School in 2007, went on to military school, and continues to be a hard-working, decent member of society. My husband Dave in 1996 decided to join the Irvington Volunteer Fire Department, where he found a real brotherhood. He's been an active member for over 20 years, David, giving his time and his life to this community that he too loves. On Monday, January 20, my son left his job to help me as I was having car trouble. He called me and said he was pulled over in Irvington for an outta light and would be with me shortly. When he failed to arrive, I decided to go to the police station to see what happened. Unlike previous visits to the station for my job, this time I was abruptly dismissed, told he was in the back, and I could not see him for a while. Worried sick, I called town friends. The troops rallied, as they do in this small town. Good people stick together and help in times of need. Calls were made, people went to the station, all in good faith of our summon family. After he came out, he was visibly shaken. He said he was arrested for a suspended license, unbeknownst to him as the summons in question had been paid, and only his surcharge was outstanding. He said he was not treated badly, but said he was treated like he was a threat and a criminal. He was searched and handcuffed. His car was searched and impounded. Despite being respectfully polite, he remained cuffed to the wall for the entire time he was there. We're not parents who think our son does nothing wrong. Clearly, we were on him for that tail light that he never fixed. However, as a family, we have always been supportive and respectful of all our law enforcement. Today, I am here as this hardened resident aware of courtesies that are often extended to not only residents, but everyday people. My son's car was searched and impounded, costing $350. He was cuffed to the wall the entire time. Despite the fact of protocol within the department, I don't understand how these invasive things occurred, not even a simple phone call. He wasn't treated like a criminal. He was treated like a common criminal, where being, you're being no play at the time. So in doing, if doing the right thing in this community now only means going by the book and being a lifetime loyal, dedicated, respectful citizen who always has the back of this community doesn't matter any longer, if these qualities are no longer consequences in Irvington today, then in my opinion, this Village merits a community of transient residents who are here temporarily for schools, Village employees who are here just for a job. If that's the case, then you might as well just call it Any Town America and sadly lose residents like us who actually desire and enjoy giving back for our lifetime. Thank you.
Barry, is there any public comments?
Speechless.
Otherwise, we'll go on to the consent agenda.
Anything?
I mean, this is the first I've heard of it.
Well, it just happened Monday, and I didn't really have a lot of time. It took me a while to write this.
What's the normal action with this sort of?
You know, just talk to the chief.
Yeah, I just don't want it to drop with that.
Yeah, well, shall we? We could find, I mean, I don't know anything about it. It's the first letter. We could look into it and see what happens.
Thank you. I appreciate that a lot. It means a lot to me.
Absolutely. I mean, I've obviously known Dave for 20 years. It's interesting. I had to, this story didn't creep up to me, but we'll definitely look into it. Any questions on the consent agenda? Otherwise, I will make no motion to remove the consent agenda. If I have a second?
A second.
All in favor? Thank you.
Am I allowed to leave?
Oh, sure. Absolutely. We'd love you to stay, but I understand. Next, I'll make a motion to open a public hearing to consider a local law amending the zoning code to add standards for lighting and amending the nuisances chapter. If I can have a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Yeah, there's two laws here. And actually, I'm going to read, we should have a separate resolution for each law, the nuisance law and the site plan law. And I wrote something up, and I'll read it for you, and I'll read it for Brenda. Okay, the first, the first law strengthens the provision in the site plan regulations about planning board review of outdoor lighting. And it sets standards for outdoor lighting, namely that all lighting must be dark sky compliant and must be full cutoff fixtures. And both of these terms are defined in the law. It must be the minimum level required for health and safety with maximum limits specified in the property lines. There are exceptions for low-voltage landscape lighting and for lighting installed with a sensor to extinguish if it extinguishes more than 15 minutes after the area is evacuated. And then the last section in that law amends the sign regulations in the code to require that illuminated signs be dark sky compliant. Do you want to do the two separately, Brian? Do you want to?
Sure.
Okay, so then, the resolution, because this amends the zoning code, there should be a secret review of it, and that's why I didn't hear you. You have to form this up. There was, yes, it's a technicality. This is absolutely no negative environmental consequences. But anyway, this is the way the resolution should be. Whereas the local law amending the zoning code and standards for lighting is an unlisted action under SECPRA. And the Board of Trustees has reviewed the environmental assessment form and determined that the local law would have no negative environmental impacts. Now, therefore, being resolved, the Board of Trustees issues a negative declaration under SECPRA and being further resolved, that the Board of Trustees adopt a local law amending the zoning code and standards for lighting to site development plan review and sign regulations.
Did we have any questions or comments on this law from our board? We've obviously been talking about it. We'll open it up to public comment, since there's no one here. So I think I'll make the motion to close the public hearing, if I can get a second?
A second.
All right, so we're going to get the correspondence on this law.
No.
So, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
So accepted as written by the Village Attorney. I'll make another motion to accept the resolutions written by the Village Attorney, including SECPRA. If I can get a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye. I just wanted to make one side comment. You know, the cost of fixtures between dark sky and non, you know, traditional fixtures basically have come into near equal at this point. It used to be some cost factor difference, you know, a number of years ago, but it's come pretty much. And we've looked online at various things and seen that all sorts of styles are available. There's not a style limitation either. You can go from, you know...
It's dark, bleak, ambiguous.
Yeah, so I just want to make that point clear to everyone, all the residents, that it's actually surprising how far along the availability of lighting has come, dark sky compliant lighting, such that you really can find everything to fit your particular taste for your building or your project.
Great. So we start with law number two?
Yeah, and then with the, the second law amends the nuisance chapter of the Village Code to make it a nuisance for outdoor lighting to result in light trespass or glare. And it defines what those terms are, and I'll read them. Light trespass shall be considered a nuisance when a luminance at or beyond a property line abutting a residential parcel exceeds .1 foot candles, as measurable from any orientation of the measuring, except at the, measuring device, except at the entrance to a driveway or walkway. Or a luminance at or beyond a property line abutting a non-residential property exceeding .3 foot candles, otherwise the same. Or at the entrance of the driveway or walkway, the illuminance is greater than needed for safety. And glare shall be considered a nuisance when the light emanating from a light source is seen from a neighboring property or roadway at sufficient intensity to cause discomfort, annoyance, or impaired visibility. And then the law, if the Village determines that there is a nuisance lighting, which would generally be a complaint by a neighbor, you know, you're not going to go out and police this, but if there's a complaint, it provides that the nuisance should be evaded by re-aiming or relamping the fixture. And if that doesn't work, by replacing or relocating or removing the lighting fixture. And then finally, there's a fine if the person doesn't do that. And this was referred to the planning, oh, I'm sorry, it actually, not this nuisance law, the first one was, both of them actually were referred to the planning board to see if they had any comments. And they took it up at their January 8 meeting, and they didn't have any comments on either one. So that's what the nuisance law's about. And I have a resolution on that too, but I guess you should see if there's any comments in the first one.
Any comments?
Well, I just wanted to report one comment to me that was more philosophical in a way about the nuisance laws. And what was reported to me by several people is they felt that the way we write these, it requires neighbors to snitch on neighbors, was how it was described to me. And, you know, I understand that position, but I countered, you know, what other alternative do you have to, you're not going to have an enforcement officer full-time or multiple enforcement officers, because you'd need them day and night, you know, to go around. So maybe larger communities could have that? So the only thing I could come up with in thinking about this a while is whether or not complaints can be made at some point, sort of, not so much anonymously, but when presented to the homeowner in question or the building owner in question, whether or not we should shield the identity of who complained. I mean, it could be in the records, but maybe that's a way of just, you know, I had always thought the first thing you do is you go to your neighbor and try to work it out, right? So you try to be neighborly about it. So you're going to be kind of...
Don't know who it was. When they say, "I don't care."
Yeah.
I think we take anonymous complaints in the building department pretty routinely.
Okay, so that's good to know. I just wanted to point out that that was the feedback I got. It wasn't really about the lighting, per se, but it was about the process of the complaint.
Well, that was kind of odd on this one, because part of the way declare is defined is if it annoys, if it annoys somebody else, the other might, you know, how would you define it?
It was bigger brush. They were painting it up. Lower law and other laws. It was like this, it was more of a street about, are we turning neighbors against each other?
But isn't, I mean, isn't this some, I'm sorry, I can't, I can hear where they can't talk. Isn't it somewhat subjective? You know, it's a nuisance if it bothers you. My neighbor's light was shining right in my window. I knocked on her door, and the story, problem solved. But I didn't necessarily want somebody else to go to her and say, "You're bothering an unidentified neighbor," you know?
Well, in that case, you couldn't even fix the problem without knowing which neighbor was having the impact. You know, they couldn't re-adjust the handle of the light without knowing which would you, so there's a little bit of, I don't think there's a good answer. I just think it's, you know, life is complex, and we do have to have a fallback in case your neighbor doesn't listen to you. There has to be a way to say, you know, there's an issue here that should be resolved for the general good.
We wouldn't need any laws if we just got our neighbors to listen to us, right?
That's where we started about the leak blow a long from the start.
So again, there's no one here from the public, so...
You want to just go through the vote, should we open the hearing and closing it?
Okay, I thought we opened it from both of them, but I could make a re...
You closed it down, but I guess you technically did. All right, so close this one.
We can make a motion to open the public hearing. Again, if I can get a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Anyone have any comments, any additional comments? Public is not in attendance. Larry, we have received correspondence?
No.
So I'll make a motion to close the public hearing. If I can have a second?
A second.
All in favor? Would you like to read the resolution?
Yeah. The resolve to adopt a local law amending the nuisances chapter of the Village Code with respect to light trespass and glare.
I'll make a motion. If I can have a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye. Am I the second?
I will make a motion to open a public hearing to consider a local law amending Chapter 19, defense and indemnification of the Village Code with respect to indemnification for reckless conduct. If I can have a second? All in favor? The public hearing is now open.
All right, the existing defense and indemnification law does not indemnify employees when the damage they're found liable for resulted from intentional wrongdoing or recklessness on the part of the employees. Under this amendment, the Board of Trustees would be permitted, but doesn't have to, to indemnify only a police officer or public works employee for reckless conduct. And I'll explain why. If the board is satisfied that the liability is based on an act or omission of an employee acting within the scope of his or her employment, at the time of the action or omission, the employee acted without maliciousness and otherwise within the standards required for employees holding comparable positions within the Village, at the time of the action or omission, the employee acted in good faith and in the best of interests of the Village, and at the time of the act or omission, the employee did not willfully violate... and at the time of the act or omission, the employee did not willfully violate a clearly established provision of law or village policy. Now, it sounds like, how could reckless conduct meet those standards? But the reason the amendment is necessary is that it's possible that, let's say, for example, a public works employee who's in an accident, and they could be found to be, by a jury, to be reckless, even though the conduct might only have been negligent, and that's because the vehicle and traffic law and the general municipal law provide that police officers and highway workers can't be sued for negligence. So if somebody wants to sue them, it would have to be for recklessness, and you could get a sympathetic jury who finds them reckless. And what this does is it gives the Board of Trustees the authority to indemnify them in an appropriate case of all those standards are met. Something that's pretty unlikely to come up, but the protection's there.
And if they're indemnified, that means they, that whatever came out of the lawsuit, that money would come from insurance?
Right. So whatever damages they were awarded, hopefully it'll come out of insurance, but it means that you're responsible for it, and hopefully your insurance will cover it. But so if there's, if somebody's, you know, car runs over their foot, and they get a $20,000 damages award, that the truck driver wouldn't have to pay for it, the village would have to, or the village is insured.
So other than recklessness and negligence in these sort of situations, are there other things that the employee could be found guilty of?
Well, I mean, I suppose from intentional wrongdoing, but this does not, this does not indemnify it for intentional wrongdoing. So wouldn't, wouldn't a good example of this be a police chase, where a police is, police may be speeding to apprehend somebody, and there's an accident? So that would give us the discretion to decide to indemnify. Yeah. So we don't have to, but it means that there might be actions outside the four corners of the law that we may decide where we want to support our officers doing that, if necessary.
And you don't have to either, right?
Right. Those are, those are really high standards, the ones I read. I mean, it's like, it's almost inconceivable that you could meet those standards and actually be reckless. The point is that...
For bad, it's a bad jury relief valve, really.
Yeah. Exactly.
And how did this originate? Did you find this? Did our labor lawyer?
Talk something hard about this. When this came up, with the PBA, the PBA attorney was asking for this, and...
Right. Well, what happened was that the board was spending some time working on its defense and indemnification law, if I recall.
Yes, I think so.
And you were making change?
There was like a New York, there was a New York State scam.
Don't ask me to go tell you what they were.
I'll tell you what it was. We had, there was an exception in here that looked like, oh, if you, if you didn't follow village procedure, village law, the Irvington law, then you couldn't be indemnified. That's what the law, but then there was this provision at the very end of it, that like, it was an exception that swallowed the whole.
That's right.
So we fixed the law and gave them the excellent protection.
And then this came up.
And during, during the public hearing, the union attorney made this pitch. It was unrelated to the changes you were making at the time, and so it is a while ago, I know that, and, but it, as you know, from having it brought up a few times privately, that the, there were a bunch of questions about when this could apply, and we had to be careful about whether there's insurance coverage, and how do other communities handle it, and there was a lot of research that was done. So we finally got all the answers to line up and gave you the ability to consider this.
And you got the insurance, Larry, did you provide the insurance area that they would cover in this situation?
Yeah.
They would otherwise, if they would otherwise indemnify, they would indemnify in this situation.
Correct.
So if there be no further questions, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing. If I can have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The resolve to adopt a local law amending chapter nineteen, defense and indemnification of the village code with respect to indemnification for reckless conduct. I'll make a motion if I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Larry, can you maybe send a copy to PBA's attorney?
Yeah, I did actually in advance of this, but I'll let them know that it was adopted.
Should also get a someone, who does the DPW have as an attorney, or do they?
No, they have a labor representative. I can...
Yes, certainly, because I'm sure it will make them happy in case of some bizarre garbage truck accident.
Larry, did you want to say anything about the appointment of court clerk, or?
Well, we have, our current court clerk is retiring on fairly short notice, but actually next week. So we, the judge and I have discussed, the assistant court clerk is being recommended for appointment to that position. And we will be searching for a new assistant, which may or may not be full-time the way it is now. We're looking to restructure it a little bit, so stay tuned.
This was unexpected.
Um, it was expected within a little later timeframe, but it happened a little sooner, so we're ready.
The resolve to appoint Donna M. Fusco to the position of court clerk and annual salary of $82,836 effective January 29, 2020. Subject to probationary period of not less than 12 weeks and not more than 52 weeks. I'll make a motion if I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Resignation from the Irvington Town Hall Theater Commission. Resolve to accept with regret the resignation of Marjorie Rosenfeld from the Irvington Town Hall Theater Commission effective January 2020. I'll make a motion if I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Marjorie, for your long-term service.
Yes, I'd like to thank her too. I've been fully liaison to that group for a long time, and she's been a wonderful addition, and she will be missed on the commission.
Next up is resignation from the Architectural Review Board. Resolve to accept with regret the resignation of James Crapp from the Architecture Review Board effective January 2020. I'll make a motion if I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you also for your service. Next up is elimination of outstanding parking tickets.
Get too excited.
So, yeah, so I'm carrying this one out somewhat on behalf of the Justice Court and the judge. The Irvington's independent auditors had noted that there's been a large uncollected amount, large and very old uncollected amount, that dates back in excess of five years, and much of it is in excess of 10 years. And there are, you know, probably some longstanding reasons why they're there, but the fact is they are there, going back even into the mid 90s, as a matter of fact, some of the tickets. So the recommendation of the auditors was to really effectively cancel the tickets. There's no reasonable means to collect them. There's no due process that you can afford anyone that has a ticket that's outstanding for that long. They probably don't even remember being in Irvington in some cases, so there's just no way of effectively collecting them. So the more important question from my standpoint when presented with this is to really ensure that the problems or problem that may have existed in the past has been fixed. And the data shows that the collection rates in recent years, 2015 to 17, for example, have been anywhere between 93 and 95 percent, which is very good. The current system is automated, the collections, there's, there's follow-up, you know, by mail directly. And when, when tickets are not paid and they exceed a certain number within a certain window of time, New York State allows the registrations to be barred, and that's being done. So to be honest with you, beyond the barring of registrations, there's not a lot of collection methods available. So, but we do whatever we can, and they've, they've been very successful in recent years. So that's it.
Any questions? I mean, I know we've been, you know, we obviously, we've been kind of talking about this for a while. You know, and I think, you know, as you said, the important thing is to ensure we have a good process going forward. You know, what happened 15, 20 years ago is, that's what happened 15, 20 years ago. But we have an excellent system now.
Yeah.
You know, that's, that's what, you know, that's what's important.
And it seems to be working well. The, you know, of those numbers, the, interestingly, almost 75 percent of that 200,000 is 10 years old or older, and almost 50 percent is actually 15 years or older. So the vast majority are, you know, well in excess of the five years that was recommended.
Do we have any idea or any way of knowing, either with this old outstanding tickets or the more recent ones, which we've been collecting over 90 percent, what percentage are village residents getting tickets versus what percentage are out of village?
We have the information to figure that out, but based upon registration of the vehicle. The, and just so you know, the, we have a complete list which contains license plate, name, address, lots of personal information that we would redact and keep from any disclosure. I mean, it's going to be kept on file as a matter of record, but it wouldn't be disclosed publicly. We have a redacted version which has, which I think I'd circulated actually, but it's a, has three digits of the license plate, and I think the state, and that's it, as well as the amounts do. So you can't figure it out from that particular report, but the internal one, we probably could, so.
I'm just curious.
I can, I mean, if it's a, if it's a quick enough query to run on it, I could do that for you.
Does that have to be at the top of your file?
No, it's fine.
Put it there.
Yeah, right.
Are there any appeal process to this, or is this, they've already missed their possible court date?
I'm not really sure, to be honest.
I'm just wondering, you know, what...
I don't think there's a...
There's not a court date, do you just have to?
Not sure.
Because I know like in Dobbs Ferry, when I'm not a ticket there, you could appear as an appearance date.
Right.
Or you could just send it in.
Yes.
Whereas there is a significant number of outstanding parking summonses that are in excess of five years old, and whereas the Justice Court has applied all available collection methods in an effort to collect the amounts owed, and whereas the village's independent auditor, PKF O'Connor Davies, has recommended that these old outstanding parking summonses be limited permanently, now therefore be resolved to eliminate a total of $200,981 of outstanding parking summonses as detailed on the list maintained in the Office of the Village Clerk Treasurer, all of which were issued December 13, 2014 and prior. I'll make a motion if I can have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Authorization to create a change order number two for River Road Booster Pump Station Project.
So this is the, the second change order for this project. This project is, is done. This change order relates to rock that needs to, needed to be excavated during the course of this project. So the project is still within budget even with this change order, but it was work that was deemed to be necessary, obviously overseen by our engineers.
Resolve to approve the following change to contract 201809 with King's Capital Construction for the River Road Booster Pump Station Project in about $5,386.13, and to authorize the village administrator to execute said change document. I'll make a motion if I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Reports of boards, standing committees, and officers, trustee liaison reports. Mark?
I don't really have anything except to say that there's a meeting coming up, which I'm sure Larry knows the date of, of the Climate Smart Certification Committee.
Monday.
Uh?
Monday.
And that's their first time they're all getting together as a group, and reviewing who is assigned to what sub-deliverables. So it should be interesting.
That's with you, Larry? They'll be with you?
I'll be there, yeah.
Yeah.
This is actually the second meeting, but it's the first working meeting.
First working, yeah, sorry. So I'm not sure, is there room for more people if they're interested, or is it really pretty?
Sure.
Okay. So I would say, suggest you could contact me or Larry or Judy Frimmer, who's the chair of the working group. And that's it.
Larry?
Uh, that Larry?
Sorry. Sorry. I usually call him Doc.
My mistake.
Doc.
The department is excited to, the, the rec. department is excited to announce that the information for the summer day camp and teenscape will be available very soon. Dates are set. The summer day camp will be held at the Main Street School because of construction that's scheduled at Dow's Lane. Job applications for positions on the day campus staff are available at the Recreation Parks Department. Some of our best residents have been through that.
It's my first job.
The Memorial Day Parade Committee is scheduled to meet on Monday, January 27, 7:00 p.m. at the Senior Center. Community Advisory Board will hold their next meeting Tuesday, February 11, 8:00 a.m. at the Senior Center. Recreation Parks Advisory Committee will hold their February meeting on Wednesday, February 26, 7:00 p.m. at the Senior Center. IS Executive Board meeting for January will be Tuesday, February 26, 8:00 a.m. at the Senior Center. Irvington Woods Committee will meet on Thursday, February 13, 7:00 p.m. at the O'Hara Nature Center. There are many youth and adult programs that are now available for signup. You can follow on Facebook or contact the Recreation Department. Anyone interested in playing on a team, excuse me, anyone interested in placing a team, excuse me, in our adult softball league is asked to contact Mike DiNardo. Organizational meetings will be held in March. We offer a co-ed league, amends openly, and an older for the region.
Thank you.
All right.
Ah, yes. So the theater, we mentioned the theater commission, and that group of volunteers meets monthly, and their next meeting is February 13. They, their, their, their work has expanded over the years because they produce a lot of programs as a commission, as opposed to just renting out the theater. So one thing I'll mention, next weekend is called the Irvington Folk Festival, and this is January 31 to February 1. There's a whole schedule of things over that whole weekend. One of the performers is Dar Williams. So these are sought-after names in this world of music, and there are things on Friday night and Saturday afternoon and Saturday night. So upstairs this, and it's on the website, of course. So that's next weekend. My other reports are from Greg Nielsen and Jim Englishby. So we had Winter Storm, number three, four, and five. I won't go into the details, but they've all happened. There was a stone wall repaired at the Field Point parking lot. There was a water main break on Mountain Road, and the two departments worked together. There was need to help the Parks Department with brush removal at Sinek Hudson, and replanting the Christmas tree at the reservoir. So the one that was out here?
Yeah.
Yes.
Now replanted. Repaired and built a patch basin on North Broadway. And there was fall leaf bag pickup and Christmas tree recycling, and that's continuing. So does leaf bag pickup happen all of year? Or does it stop at a certain?
It's really, I'm surprised, because I put out leaves, but it was more than that. It was, you know, stuff from my garden, but I thought that the DPW always goes around, and I thought it was even Tuesday or...
I get it on Monday.
It's probably on that app, but...
It tells me it's on Mondays.
Yeah, okay. So it seems like it's ongoing.
So even if it sticks, you know, you call it leaf, it's leaf bag, okay?
It's linked bags.
Right, right, right. So I could go all the way through, even, pardon. All right. So Jim's is, of course, reading water meters and maintaining all the facilities. Repaired a broken fire hydrant on Stern's Ridge. Jetted a sewer on Hillside Terrace, repaired a water main break on Mountain Road. There was another sewer on North, jetted a sewer on North Continent, and there was a broken fire hydrant at 100 North Broadway, and a broken sewer pump at South Astor Street Sewer Pump Station. And that's it.
Great.
I just had a report from the Fire Department tonight. This, I thought, was rather notable. This was the monthly meeting on January 23, and to that point, there were 17 calls. That's averaging one a day and four to five on certain given days. And most notably, there was a car fire on 119 at 3:00. And most notably, there was a car fire on 119 at 3:00 a.m., and the chief says, "Thanks for you that those attended. It was very good they checked the trunk," because there was ammunition in the trunk. So sometimes we look at all of the training that goes on, and it seems like we're preparing for something that never happens. It does. And the training that's coming up that happened in January included active shooter, defensive driving, and PESH training. So very good they're doing it, and thanks.
Thank you. Now I will say, Larry...
Okay. So a couple of things, well, one thing mainly, is we had a bid opening for the Station Road Main Street Sidewalk Project. We did receive six bids. There'll be a little summary put in your Friday folder. One of the bids was within our budget, the other, another one or two were not too far out, and then there were some that were higher. The low bidder looks at this point to be qualified and in order, and you can anticipate a resolution from being presented to you for your consideration, probably at the next meeting. There's still a few things to iron out with New York State DOT, but the bids look good. So we're very happy that we got six, actually. That's it.
When does the park close for construction? The Matheson Park. How soon does that happen? Not until...
Well, we, I mean, the anticipated schedule is, you know, we're trying to be, have a contractor in place by March-ish, you know, when the weather breaks, but it all depends on the weather, depends on how successful the bid process goes. Those bids open up in early February, so we won't know until then, for sure. But basically, as soon as construction starts, we would expect the park to close.
So kind of March-ish?
March-ish, yes. Yeah, that's the best I can say right now.
March-ish.
Yes.
Brenda?
Okay. Well, we're well underway with the budget process. The next meeting, we will have a workshop, and I'll have the books ready, and give an overview of where we at, where we're at right now. There's still a few more moving parts to put together with assessed values, so it's a little premature to give an overview with that, that's solidified with the assessor for being reviewed.
Great. Those attorneys report?
No report.
Public comment. Review of action items.
So there are two items, but I think I can take them both off the list, I think. The, the law's been sent to the CSEA president, like we talked about, and as far as the statistics for village residents, there's a pretty quick calculation that I did, which is about 546 out of the 3,000 or so separate line items that are on that list are village residents, well, have a village address. So...
I'm responding to Linda Kruger.
Yes.
Or to the, Lynn's comments about what's, we have to do something, I don't know what we do in terms of, I don't know, what official sponsors...
What are you talking about, Mark, again?
Sorry, the letter that was read to us by the woman whose son was...
Oh, yes. Right.
Held for, I don't know, for...
Yeah.
Review. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the executive session regarding police personnel. If I can, you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.